Okay, is everybody ready to get started on this workshop? So we'll call this meeting in order. We'll recognize that all five council members are present. And then we have our budget workshop for the new fiscal year. I know we have a long presentation, so what we'll do is we'll try to have some stops in here, some. Okay, so there's any questions from council members? So we'll stop at page 12 after revenues. We'll stop on page 12. Then after that will be page 22 after the revenue appropriations, excuse me. Then after that we can stop on page 33 after we discuss reserves and personnel. Then after that we can stop on page, which is page 57 after we go through with building a better Montclair.
Page 33, 57?
Uh huh. And then after that we will finish up on page 72 on the budget before we hit the Moncler Housing Corporations. There's about four or five stops in there just on the city budget. So I guess we'll start with Ed or Janet, who wants to lead off?
Mr. Mayor, our finance director Janet Kolbeck will be doing the PowerPoint presentation. Just want to let the members of the council and the public know that obviously every year putting together the budget is a huge and one of probably the most major projects the city undertakes on an annual basis. Our objective obviously is always to provide you a balanced budget. I think we've achieved that for nearly every budget that we've ever presented. And within recent years, we're pleased to add that on top of that, we've produced excess revenues that have allowed us to move the money into special funds and to provide other necessary equipment for operation of the organization and for conditions of employment. And we hope to continue that process going forward. Just do want to let you know that for this fiscal year anyway, it does appear that sales tax do appear to be stagnant. In our meeting with our tax consultant earlier today, HDL, we did learn that California should anticipate a 1.1% negative as far as sales tax revenue for this year. Southern California would be a 0.8% negative. But they do anticipate that in future fiscal years, 2024, '25, and maybe towards the end of fiscal year '23, '24, there will be a positive turnaround. So after we get through this calendar year, it does look like things will be a little bit better. And there is also very little indication that there is a recession that is awaiting the state of California. So it appears that we will miss that event that has been predicted by a number of economists. The latest reports from the federal government indicate that for the month of May, consumer spending actually increased from two previous negative months. It went up to 0.3%, which was, you know, maybe not a significant number, but coming from February and March and April where those numbers were in the 3, 5, and 6 area percents. I think that that is an indication of improvement. So with that, we'll start with the PowerPoint and then respond to questions as the mayor indicated at the stoppage at each of those slide points as we go forward.
Mr. Starr, good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff, and members of the audience. Tonight we will be presenting our fiscal year 2023-24 general operating fund budget review. Start with the overview and budget process. This evening's budget workshop provides an overview of the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 annual budget for the city of Montclair with focused discussion on the following topics: budget process, producing a balanced budget, revenue and appropriations, unassigned and special purpose reserve funds, personnel services, and building a better Montclair. The annual budget development process includes the following significant steps: finance department staff develop and refine revenue projections; finance department staff and conjunction with departments forecast personnel requirements; department heads and their staff are provided with prior year amounts and formats for budgeting annual budget requests; departments prepare their budget requests for appropriations; city manager and finance department meet with department heads and staff to evaluate, modify, and finalize department level requests; and the proposed annual budget document is submitted for city council review and consideration. Producing a balanced budget. The annual and primary goal related to budget preparation: produce an operating budget where revenues equal or exceed appropriations and programs and services are adequately funded to meet community and organizational needs and requirements. The fiscal year 2023-24 budget as presented has a net excess of general fund revenues over general fund operating appropriations in the amount of $3,785,229. This excess in general fund revenues is driven largely by revenue generated by Measure L. This surplus in general fund revenue over general fund appropriations has enabled the general fund unassigned reserve to be brought to $8 million, $8 million, which is approximately 22.45% of the general fund operating appropriations and nears compliance with city council's unassigned reserve ratio goal of 25%. And I'll move on to revenues. So for the current year, our revenue for all funds is just over $69 million. The revised prior year was just over $73.6 million, a difference of $4.4 million less than the prior year. And that's mainly due to the American Rescue Plan Act that is now complete. The general operating fund, the current year, just over $39.3 million. Revised prior year was just over $40 million with a net change of less $690,000 for this year. Significant revenue components, the general fund: $33,227,793 in combined property sales, property, sales and use, and transaction and use taxes. This amount includes the following estimates: just over $15.9 million in Bradley Byrne sales tax; $11.07 million in transaction and use tax revenue related to Measure L; just over $2.7 million in transaction and use tax revenue related to Measure F; and $3.4 million in property tax revenue. Of the above total, the following amounts are allocated as indicated: debt service on bonds: just over $2.5 million for the 2014 lease revenue bond; $2.39 million for the 2021 lease revenue bond; just over $4.4 million for the 2021 pension obligation bond; $3 million to special purpose reserve funds to create three new proposed assigned revenue funds for special governmental purposes, which we'll discuss later; and $785,229 to the Economic Development Assets Fund. Other fiscal year 2023-24 general fund revenue adjustments: $431,103 increase in taxes other than property, sales and use, and transaction and use taxes; $150,100 decrease in licenses and permits due primarily to an expected decrease in the issuance of building permits; $55,000 decrease in fines and forfeitures due primarily to a decrease in parking citations; $95,000 increase in charges for services due primarily to an increase in rubbish collection fees; $20,300 decrease in miscellaneous revenue due primarily to the end of the lot rental agreement with police construction. For all other fund accounts, $96,000 increase in the Measure I fund due primarily to an increase in retail sales in San Bernardino County; $762,381 increase in the after-school program fund due primarily to a new contract with Ontario Montclair School District to allow the city to assist additional children during after-school hours; $450,000 increase in the Economic Development Fund due primarily to an increase in RP-TTF property taxes; $4.79 million decrease in the American Rescue Plan Fund due primarily to the end of the program; $503,000 increase in the sewer operating fund due primarily to an increase in sewer fees. So I just wanted to stop here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions on the revenue side? Anybody have any questions? All right, then we'll go on to appropriations.
So on this slide we show a table that depicts the department request versus city manager recommended. So all funds, the departments requested $51.1 million. The city manager approved $48.3 million, so we reduced it by $2.8 million. The general operating fund, the department's request was $39.4 million. City manager approved was $35.6 million, so we reduced those expenses by $3.8 million. And the city manager recommended amounts, the current year versus the prior year for all funds, the current year was $57.7 million. The prior year was $52.7 million, an increase of just over $5 million. The general operating fund, current year, $35.6 million. The prior year was $32.5 million, an increase of just over $3 million. Personnel services, all funds, $29,731,619, which is 61.5% of total appropriations. This is up from just over $26 million last year. The general fund, $24,762,507, which is 69.5% of general fund appropriations. And this is up from just over $22.6 million for fiscal year 2023-24. This increase in personnel costs is related to the addition of fire personnel and negotiated cost of living increases. Services and supplies, all funds, $17,489,685, which is 36.2% of total appropriations. This is up from just, this is up from $15.6 million for fiscal year 2023. The general fund, $10,181,531, which is 28.6% of general fund appropriations. And this is up from just over $9.4 million for fiscal year 2023. Capital outlay, $1,132,469 is budgeted in fiscal year 2023-24, of which $332,000 is being funded by the Equipment Replacement Fund. City manager department, $453,000 for computer equipment for citywide requirements. Human services department, a total of $49,150 for office furniture for the assistant city manager, one administration vehicle, and one performance stage. Police department, $218,400 for three patrol vehicles. Fire department, $196,319 for one fire chief vehicle, nine SCBA bottles, one ventilation fan, two emergency vehicle light packages, classroom tables and chairs, gym equipment for both fire stations, and one Life Pack 15 version 4 cardiac monitor and defibrillator. Public works department, $210,600 for a four-ton asphalt hot box trailer, a high-side dump trailer, a tow behind cement mixer, computer and software for the sewer camera truck, fire alarm control panel for server room/use center, towable boom lift, one three-ton backup AC split system for the server room, and a micro floor scrubber. Community development department, $5,000 to enclose an area for conference room. And then here you see the budget allocations by department. So we're changed from prior year is we're down $1,090,000 and the debt service is up $2,514. So here we show the transfers to and from the general fund operating budget. So we have a total transfers of $3,885,229. And those fund transfers are as follows: the preliminary operating budget recommends the following transfers in to the general fund operating budget: $100,000 from the traffic safety fund for applicable programs. The preliminary operating budget recommends the following transfers out from the general fund operating budget to the special purpose funds indicated below, and these are the new ones that we're proposing: $1.25 million to the proposed Gold Line Betterment Fund; $1 million, that should be $1,250,000 also to the proposed street maintenance fund; $500,000 to the proposed homelessness advocacy housing outreach assistant fund. And the preliminary operating budget recommends the following transfers out from the general fund operating budget to the fund indicated below: $785,229 to the Economic Development Asset Fund.
Okay, any questions on the appropriations?
Just a couple, Mr. Mayor. Let me get to my page, hold on one second.
I just wanted to say I'm happy to see the fire chief is going to give himself a new vehicle. Got a smile there.
On page 17 for the fire department, the $38,000 for the one life pack. Which station will be using that? I'm assuming, is there another operable life pack at one of the other stations?
If I recall, this is a multi-year acquisition, is that correct? And so the fire department had agreed that they would acquire one each year. This is the second one? And then there will be another one purchased next year?
We have two last year.
Two, two last year, okay. So this concludes that.
Be three.
So they're sufficient for both stations, for both trucks to use? That was my concern. Next page, page 17. Explain to me, please, the last item, the $5,000 to enclose an area for conference room. How's that?
You're talking about community development, so we are creating-
18, sorry.
So we're creating a new conference room in the community development area. It already exists, but it is open to people walking by, so there's little privacy. They can't do any real meetings in there. They have no means of communicating openly because of the fact that there are open walls and there are people passing back and forth. So this will allow for new wall to be constructed and to make certain that the climate control system is working adequately for that particular area.
Thank you for the explanation, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Mayor, I believe that is it for these sections.
Okay, Councilman Roux.
There we go.
I have a question beginning on page 16. $218,400 for three patrol vehicles. I understand what that patrol vehicle is. Do we have any way that we could perhaps go in with other communities that may be buying vehicles and get them at a better rate?
So the issue here is less the patrol vehicles, as it is the lighting equipment that goes on the vehicles. Unfortunately, the cost of the retrofitting the vehicles, not just the lighting equipment, but all the other materials that go with making it ready, now are effectively half the cost of the vehicle. So while the vehicles may come in at around $48,000, the cost of purchasing all of the necessary add-on equipment is half of that, around $26,000. So it's less, again, a matter of what the cost of the vehicle is as opposed to what the cost impact is in relation to supply chain issues and other things related to all of the other additional equipment. We have explored looking at aggregation, piggybacking, particularly with San Bernardino County. But in the case of vehicles particularly right now, because they are in short supply, it is difficult for anybody to allow for another agency to piggyback with them simply because they're trying to maintain, or rather, collect vehicles for their own operations as well. In fact, this last year, we were fortunate that when we went out to look to purchase, we were anticipating that it was going to take a year. But another agency had given up their right to a certain number of vehicles, and so the police department was actually able to get ahead of the game in adding vehicles last year. So I doubt we'll have that luck this year, although the latest data does indicate that 1.3 million additional vehicles are available this year for people to purchase. That does indicate that it will be an easier opportunity for people as well as agencies to buy. However, the price of vehicles is not going down. It will continue to stay up. So I don't think aggregation will work, at least not right now.
And then when we, as we're not doing aggregation, which, you know, I think would be beneficial, but when we put out the request for proposal, do we have specific, I don't want to say car dealers, but car dealers that we go to?
We put out bids and then we wait for the bids to come in, or bid requests, and we wait for the bids to come in from various auto dealerships. And sometimes we'll get two, three, but typically not more than that. So there, we do send to specific dealerships who we've had a historic relationship with, but we also open up beyond that.
I was just wondering how we do that because it can be very nebulous at times.
Yes.
My next question or questions, it's on page 21. $1.25 million to the proposed Gold Line Betterment Fund. What is the proposed Gold Line Betterment Fund?
So we are anticipating that when the Gold Line construction begins to reach Montclair, there's going to be a need for a bridge that crosses over Monovista Avenue. There is a desire to put some accoutrements onto that bridge that indicates, like if you're coming from the north, heading south, that you're entering the city of Montclair. That would cost money. We're also planning on making improvements to the transcenter itself. We would also like to construct a pedestrian bridge that would align with the Gold Line Bridge. That would be a cost that the city would have to absorb. We're also looking at going after a grant in relation to that pedestrian bridge to help defer some of those costs. So we anticipate that to make modifications, just as many of the cities have done in Los Angeles County, to approve the appearance of the different construction components going in their communities, we anticipate that we want to make those same sorts of improvements. The only difference here is that in Los Angeles County, nearly all of the betterments were absorbed by the construction authority through their allocations, through the various measures that Los Angeles County voters approved. In San Bernardino County, it's been made clear to us that any betterments would have to be absorbed entirely by the city of Montclair, and they would, funding would not come from the county.
And as far as San Bernardino County is concerned, they will only take whatever the basic Gold Line Bridge is, I understand that. Is that their policy with other similar situations?
Well, they've not really, well, if you're talking about, for example, freeway construction, they do do improvements to overpasses over the freeways in, in working with the respective cities. But it is my understanding that they do require those cities to pay for those improvements.
I'll keep monitoring that. And then the last one I have is $500,000 to the proposed homeless advocacy housing and outreach assistance fund. Will this include, rather than just, you know, some assistance, will that actually include the beginning of perhaps buildings, something?
It is, in fact, moving towards that direction, yes. In fact, we intend to-
Here in the city.
We intend to increase this amount during the course of the year by going after grants. In fact, we have a number of grants we're looking at right now to try and secure funding for projects that will be related to housing in the community for homeless people.
So that will be doing a building of some type actually here within the boundaries of Montclair?
Well, I'm not saying that the $500,000 would be sufficient for that.
No, no, the $500,000 wouldn't, but the same would go towards some of that.
Yes.
Because the worst thing we can do is to say, well, we would like to do something, but let it be built in another city and we'll simply help provide services. So we're looking at building something in here, correct?
Well, it would depend on the direction that the council gives us when we get to that point. So for example, right now, San Bernardino County, at least a legislator in San Bernardino County is looking at Patton State Hospital to be a regional homeless shelter. And whether or not the council wants to go that direction, that will be up to the council to direct.
So what we do is basically say, take the homeless here, export them somewhere else.
I'm only telling you what the legislature in San Bernardino County is doing.
But I'm asking a question. Would we use money to build a shelter here? Because it's my understanding, through the grapevine of a variety of things I deal with, that Montclair's proposal would be, it will be built somewhere else, we'll simply fund that.
Okay, well, I don't know where you're getting that from.
Yeah, that's not a proposal. Asking a question that's a legitimate question.
All right, let me answer the question there. That's not the proposal. I believe what the proposal is, we're trying to put some seed money aside, and there's a possibility that this, we may have a facility in Montclair at all. There's a whole bunch of factors that need going into that. One is trying to find an adequate site to purchase. I think staff, there may be a motel for sale in Montclair, not my parents' motel, but another, another site in Montclair, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of ifs. We don't know, but this is an idea, have some seed money, get something started. But obviously what we want to do is to reach out and provide homeless assistance here.
I'm asking, this is great to say we have seed money. That's wonderful.
Yeah, but you can't build something if you don't know, if you don't have all the pieces together, and we'll see how it goes. We don't know.
I would object to anything that says we export the situation to somebody else. I think we are required by law-
Well, I disagree with you, Mr. Roux. I think that, I always believe if one is resolve a homeless issue, it has to be a regional issue. It can't be city by city by city. It doesn't work that way. But we'll see where things go. I think we're trying to work on some stuff in the city of Montclair. Let's move on.
I would disagree with that.
Well, that's your opinion, my opinion. Let's move on.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of thoughts-
Go ahead, go ahead. Mr. Roux, you have anything else?
That's all I have on this part.
All right, Councilman Lopez.
Just three items based on your comments, Mr. Starr. Regarding the police cars, am I correct in that Ford is still the predominant provider of police vehicles?
It is one of the predominant ones, yes. It's not the only provider, but it is the predominant one in the market right now.
And-
At least for the type that we're acquiring, the SUVs.
Is there any stipulation that the new cars we purchase have to have some kind of electric or green component to them now?
None of these cars are going to be along wolves' lines, no.
Okay, good, because that would no doubt up the cost with respect to that. Now regarding the Gold Line Betterment Fund, you stated in your comment in response to my colleague about the redoing some work on the transcenter, a bridge, which I saw in your summary with signage informing passengers coming by that we are in Montclair, and some appearance of construction issues. I would hope that we wouldn't spend before we know we're closer for certain that the Gold Line is coming. Because if we start, my hesitation is this, if we start erecting a bridge, doing signage, making changes around the corridor of Monovista and Arrow, or anywhere on the transcenter, and then it gets pulled, the plug is pulled or it's delayed, we then have made some changes that may not necessarily have been needed to be made at that time. That's, that's my concern with respect to those funds. You can comment if you'd like.
Oh, yes, certainly. So while we are phrasing it the Gold Line Betterment Fund, as you know, the Montclair Transcenter is a high-quality transit center. It already has MetroLink as well as a number of bus services that operate out of the transcenter. So the argument for construction of a pedestrian bridge would still make sense even if the Gold Line wasn't to arrive, because we would be connecting with housing developments that are on the west side of Monovista Avenue, allowing them, residents who are choosing to use the transit facility for transit-related purposes, to get over to the transcenter from the west side of Monovista Avenue. There is also, when I indicated, that there is grant monies that are available. Specifically, what those grant dollars are for is that if there is an evacuation need, then building a pedestrian bridge would facilitate the evacuation of individuals from the transcenter. And frankly, under county requirements as well as the PUC, we are required to look at evacuation components. In fact, the police department has worked with the construction authority and Metro over the course of the last five years in developing access routes off of the trains in the event that there is an accident or some other reason why we have to evacuate people out of the area. So this would accentuate our ability to do that, and we would be looking at grant funding for that related purpose. So the pedestrian bridge wouldn't be necessarily an unnecessary construction, even if we didn't get the Gold Line. I think it would actually accentuate things. But obviously, it would be a very significant betterment if the Gold Line did arrive.
No, I agree with you. And actually, having the bridge there with the new Alexan addition that would serve those residents that would be coming in, is the purpose of the fund also to have a matching fund component in the account should some of those grants?
Yes, well, not necessarily a matching fund. We do have a application in with Congressman Torres's office as well as our two state senators under the community project funding program.
Is that the five?
That's the one we received, $2 million for Saratoga Park. This year, we submitted a request for $5.6 million for improvements at the transcenter. So this would be available to augment that as well. We don't, we're not required to have a match, but this would certainly be available to augment.
And then just one final thing. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, I believe we had consensus from council, maybe about a month ago at a council meeting, that the issue, or maybe it was even earlier, the issue regarding a homeless shelter or the homeless discussion was to be brought back to us either as a specific item on the agenda or a workshop. I believe that was direction given to staff. Just to kind of piggyback on this.
Yeah, we're supposed to have a workshop. We're looking at two workshops. One on homelessness issues, and second one was on affordable housing at two different workshops, and that'll be second half of the year.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
This is just out of curiosity, but-
This is just out of curiosity, but is the performance stage going to replace the one that we have outside for the concert in the park? Or is it?
I'm sorry, is the what?
The performance stage?
Yes, yes, it would be an entirely new stage that we would look at constructing on the backside of the community center. No, I'm sorry, this one, no, this is not that. This is two separate animals. We are looking at a permanent stage that we were bringing back to the council in relation to construction on the backside of the community center, that would serve for events in the park, including the Country Fair Jamboree, and concerts in the park, movies in the park. This is a portable stage that would serve to go to different locations. We've also received requests from different groups in the community as to whether or not we have a stage that could be borrowed. The stage we have right now is in a dilapidated condition. We don't dare loan it out. And this is a stage that is much easier to put together in its portability capacity. So the one we have now is very labor-intensive, and this one is kind of one of those automatic ones that you just.
Look good.
Push a button here, push a button there, and it starts to open up itself. Maybe not quite that easy, but.
Thank you.
Okay. Looks like everyone's spoken for appropriations, so we'll move on to the next two sections on reserves and personnel.
So we'll discuss general fund, operating fund balance for the unassigned reserve. This table shows the general operating fund balance, unassigned reserve, and comparisons with operating appropriations. So we're estimated at the end of the fiscal year 2023-24, our operating unassigned fund balance reserve will be 8 million, which is 22.45% of the operating appropriations. Government Finance Officers Association General Fund Unassigned Reserve Ratio Recommendation is a minimum of 25%. The optimum is 50%. City Council Direction: Maintain unassigned reserve ratio of 25% of operating appropriations. Estimated June 30th, 2024, general operating funds fund balance estimate of approximately 8 million, which is 22.45%, nears the threshold target of 25% of operating appropriations. Based on total reserve assets, including 3 million, I'm sorry, 30 million, $688,706 in special-purpose reserve funds, the total operating reserve ratio, unassigned and assigned, is approximately 109%. Over the past seven fiscal years, the reserve ratio has fluctuated with a low of 20% and a high of 24.95%. These fluctuations are generally the result of the following. A difference in operating appropriations between consecutive years, adjustments to the city's revenue profile, the creation of three new debt service funds that require adequate funding for annual payments. Those are the 2021 issue of lease revenue bonds debt service fund, the 2021 issue of pension obligation bonds debt service fund, and the UAL POB amortization fund. Over the past, let's see, adjustments to balances in special-purpose reserve funds to address a variety of issues, establishing additional special-purpose reserve funds to reflect changing requirements related to city operations, and funding assigned to the Economic Development Agency for real property acquisition. City staff will continue to strive to obtain a fund balance ratio in the general operating funds unassigned reserves that represents no less than 25% of the general operating funds appropriations budget. Maintaining general funds, fund balance and reserve. In recent years, the city's success at achieving and maintaining a healthy general fund, operating fund, unassigned reserve fund balance has been accomplished through commitment to the following coordinated objectives. Fiscal restraint achieved by implementation of sound economic policies and practices, reviewing the shared allocation of personnel-related costs between the general operating fund, other city entities, and other city funds, controlling or restricting growth in personnel-related costs, requiring employees to pay a portion of the CalPERS member contribution, implementation of revenue enhancement measures. Recent and ongoing efforts designed to enhance city revenues include the following. Ongoing evaluation of service contracting for specified programs. Objective: Maintain and enhance services and achieve cost efficiencies. Consideration of a Proposition 64 compliance program and any related free structure. Promoting development within North Montclair pursuant to the amended North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan with projects to include high-density residential and mixed-use development. Pursue development within the Montclair Place District Specific Plan area with development to address the changing nature of the retail industry. Promote housing, commercial, and industrial development projects throughout the Montclair community. Adopt the general plant update and the Arrow Highway Mixed Use District Specific Plan to promote appropriate zoning patterns throughout the community and direct development in the northeast area of the city. Personnel Services. We currently have 208 full-time positions, 207.66 are assigned to general fund, sewer fund, gas tax, or grants, .34 are assigned to the Montclair Succession Redevelopment Agency, and we currently have two part-time benefited positions. The city's fiscal year 2023-24 proposed operating budget incorporates the following personnel-related reclassification slash addition. Deputy Fire Chief to Fire Chief. The wage and benefit-related cost adjustment at step E of the Fire Chief classification is approximately $77,323 annually at the current rate of pay and benefits. Medic Squad Reactivation. The wage and benefit-related cost adjustment at step E is approximately $609,310 annually at the current rate of pay and benefits. Medic Squad 151 has been evaluated by the city's Equipment Maintenance Manager, and he has determined that it is in operable condition and does not require replacement at this time. However, funding has been included in the fiscal year 2023-24 budget for improvements to and equipment for Medic Squad 151. Deputy Fire Chief Paul has been directed to obtain costing information related to replacement of Medic Squad 151 as a future acquisition.
Okay. Any questions on the reserves or personnel, anybody?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Page 24. When I read about the reserve, granted, we're going to, at the end of this proposed budget, we'll have 8 million in reserves, but you're stating based upon the additional increments in the special-purpose reserve funds, we have an approximately 109% savings.
Yes, that is correct.
God forbid something major happened here in the city. Let's say we have a natural disaster, major earthquake, that requires us to expend funds to repair broken sewers, streets are cracked, the doomsday scenario that people have been stating for decades. Should that happen? We can tap into these funds. They're not specifically exclusionary or excluded from being used for such purposes if we need to tap into reserve, correct?
Well, that would be up to the council's direction, but I do want to remind you that there are special funds related that aren't discussed in here specifically, but there are, for example, special funds related to sewer replacement. A component of the fee that is paid by residents is a small amount, I think a dollar fifty a month, towards upgrades and replacement to the sewer fund, sewer system in case of a catastrophic failure.
So I think what it's telling you, these are general fund money?
Yes.
There's also, on set aside, there's special revenue, which is one special, sewers, and that's got a different balance. I think it's like $2 million in there, $3 million balancing there, if I'm correct?
I think it's around 3 million, is it? Is it that high?
3 million, yeah.
Yeah.
And then with respect to Medic Squad 151, granted, it's been sitting out of being interoperable and not used for some time. How old is the vehicle?
Dave, do you know?
I don't know the exact.
If I recall, it was, it was 2003? Not that old? Okay. We'll get it, we'll get a response for you.
I would be curious to know if the, if NEPA recommendations are met with respect to that apparatus, and if that has exceeded the lifespan, then perhaps we should expedite getting the medics, a new medic squad immediately, rather than waiting this, a subsequent budget down the road. But that, that's my concern, because it was my concern with respect to the engines that were used, that they were old and to the point where they were exceeded past the recommended lifetimes that were suggested by NEPA. I wouldn't want that to be the same case with respect to Medic 151, but I am just curious as to how old it is, and if it is indeed within the recommendations of its use.
Well, I believe you've already done an evaluation. If you want to come up here, chief? You want to, did you want to say something, chief?
I was just going to say that the.
Why don't you come to the mic here, this way, in case there's members of public listening on Zoom.
City Manager Starr had asked me to find, talk to the city, or not, the mechanic, and he had stated that his, through his evaluation, that the squad was fine to operate for the near future, that there was nothing wrong with it. And at the direction of the city manager, I'm going to research out replacing it for the next budget year.
Okay. I still am curious as to its recommended lifespan, and if we're within the parameters of that, or if we're out of them.
Well, for, you know, the squad is a regular pickup truck, F-350 or 450. It's not an engine with a pump and all the other.
Apparatus, stuff, yeah.
Equipment that's on an engine that makes it, the recommendation be 20 years or less serviceable life. The squad is basically a truck that we're running to an incident to take care of some, you know, an emergency incident. So I don't think it relatively falls under that same parameter.
Okay.
Yeah, I've seen it, the vehicle appears to be in pretty good condition. I know it's, what, what year is it? Do you have any?
I'm going to find that, I'll have that information.
It's a little memo in council, what year it is, number of mileage. I know, I think, I think if I recall, when, it was, one of the squad go, it was about 216, around there, is when, that's when up and dropped out, I think 216, went to two engines. So I, I think it was brand new back then, it probably has low mileage, I'm guessing, but you, staff's already evaluated that, looked at it, and feel confident that it can go back into service full-time.
And we're going to?
Yeah.
With this budget, we're going to replace the light.
For a future one, next year. But in the meantime, you'll provide us a memo, so we can get a better idea. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? No? I do want to say again, on the reserves, the other advantage of having $30 million is cash flow, so it's something where to happen, and we need money in the meantime to, to keep things moving forward until other sources of revenue comes in, or emergency money comes in, at least that, that's, I'm made to. But overall, we have very good reserves. All right, let's go down to budget, building a better Montclair.
Building a better Montclair requires a team of dedicated leaders committed to excellence and the pursuit of ideas and ideals. To achieve this blend of municipal achievement, the city manager regularly challenges the organization with new objectives designed to promote improvements to the overall quality of life in Montclair, facilitate infrastructure improvements throughout the city, promote and achieve strategic objectives as established by the city council, promote commercial and residential development throughout the city, establish an effective grants program to secure state, federal, and county grants for a variety of physical and economic improvements for the community, promote extension of the light rail transit to and development of the Montclair Transcenter, develop solutions to community issues including homelessness and affordable housing, address long-term issues requiring dedicated funding for specific purposes, for example, pension liabilities, bond obligations, infrastructure improvements, and capital requirements, promote and enhance community service and public programs, public safety programs, produce revenue for employee working condition enhancements, address state and federal legislative priorities that affect organization, organizational operations, and address city council-directed priorities and objectives. Recent, ongoing, and planned efforts designed to achieve building a better Montclair objectives include the following. Formation of a new transactions and use tax district. Measure L was approved by voters on November 3, 2020, with approximately 69% approval. Due to a rebounding post-pandemic economy, Measure L is projected to generate approximately 11.07 million in fiscal year 2023-24. Evaluate service contracting for specified programs. Service programs offered by the city are occasionally evaluated to determine if service contracting provides the city with viable and affordable options for delivering public services. For example, the following are provided through contract services. Fire code inspections, solid waste collection services, and a variety of services in the Public Works Department. City staff will continue to evaluate outsourcing of services to promote cost efficiencies and enhance services to the community. Consider implementation of a Proposition 64 commercial cannabis compliance program. City staff projects that a regulatory system for cannabis will produce between 2 million and 4 million dollars in annual revenue, based on the number and type of licenses issued and the designated locations for regulated commercial cannabis activities. In June, July, 2022, polling of residents conducted by FM3 demonstrated that approximately 70% of likely Montclair voters supported legalization of cannabis, and of that 70% in support, approximately 90% would support a city-sponsored tax on commercial cannabis sales and activities. Based on the 2022 polling data, the city council approved placing two measures on the November 8, 2022 general municipal election ballot. Measure R, enacting a general business license tax on cannabis businesses, was approved by voters on November 8, 2022, with approximately 70.22% approval. Advisory Measure II, establishing that cannabis business may only be permitted by future city council ordinance, subject to state law, passed by 51.91% of the vote. City staff are now in the process of revising the medicinal and adult-use cannabis regulation and safety law of the city of Montclair for presentation to the city council on fiscal year 2023-24. On June 20, 2023, city staff was advised by the Department of Cannabis Control that Montclair has been awarded a Retail Access Grant Award in the amount of $195,000. Promote development within North Montclair pursuant to the amended North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan. Promoting development in North Montclair is expected to achieve the following. Improve the overall quality of life in the community, create a new housing, office, and mixed-use projects, move forward the city's vision for a transit-oriented district, and improve Montclair's property and sales tax base. To date, NMDSP development projects include the 385-unit The Paseos at Montclair, the 129-unit The District at Arrow Station, the 212-unit The Alexan Kendry, the 23-unit Vista Court, and the 360-mixed-unit Village at Montclair now under construction. Other NMDSP projects under review and nearing entitlement include: Montclair-Kendry Expansion, consisting of 137 units, Marlowe, the Vulcan Property Site, consisting of 302 units, Montclair Place, consisting of 606 units, Main Event Entertainment, Panera Bread, Arrow Highway and Fremont Avenue Street Improvements, and NMDSP Montclair Place District Street Design and Engineering. Montclair Transcenter-related projects. Montclair Transcenter Property Acquisition. City staff continue to advocate for transfer of the Caltrans-owned parcels at the Montclair Transcenter to the city for development through a public-private partnership. A city-sponsored appraisal values the Caltrans-owned property at approximately 32 million. Montclair would be required to maintain parking for 1,600 vehicles. A city-sponsored appraisal for the cost of construction of a 1,600-space parking garage is approximately 37 million, creating an estimated 5 million negative value for the Caltrans-owned property. In April 2022, city staff submitted to the Office of State Senator Susan Rubio a detailed analysis justifying the city's request for transfer of the Caltrans-owned property at the transcenter to the city. In January 2023, city staff submitted to the Office of Assembly Member Freddie Rodriguez a request to author a bill that would declare the Montclair Transcenter as surplus property and authorize its transfer to Montclair. In April 2023, Mayor Dutray and City Manager Starr met with State Senator Susan Rubio to request support of potential legislation introduced by Assembly Member Rodriguez, transferring Montclair Transcenter property to Montclair. In August 2023, city staff will present to the city council an agreement to engage Mulay and Polizoids to develop a master site plan for the Montclair Transcenter. Montclair Transcenter Gold Line Extension. Mayor John Dutray, Councilmember Bill Rue, and City Manager Starr continue to actively advocate for extension of the Gold Line from Pomona to Montclair. The Gold Line Foothill Extension Construction Authority estimates the cost of construction from Pomona to Clermont in Montclair at approximately 750 million. The Los Angeles Metropolitan Transportation Authority has designated the Gold Line from Pomona to Montclair as its number-one transit project for state funds. Presently, the fiscal year 2023-24 state budget includes $4 billion for transit operations and capital. Once funding is established, the Construction Authority will begin a procurement process to request new bids. to request new bids. Redevelopment of Montclair Place. The planned redevelopment of Montclair Place is intended to address the changing nature of the retail industry. City staff presented the Montclair Place District Specific Plan to city council for adoption in November 2021. The MP DSP focuses on developing a central downtown warrant of blocks, streets, parks, and open spaces populated with residential, mixed-use, office, entertainment, restaurant, civic, commercial, and education uses. Promoting development of the Montclair Place District pursuant to the vision of the MP DSP would improve the overall quality of life in the community and enhance the city's sales and property tax base. MP DSP projects recently completed within or proposed for the Montclair Place District include AMC Luxury Dining and Theater and Phase 1 Mixed Use Project CIM Group featuring 606 units in six-to-eight-story building configurations reflecting six architectural styles with podium parking. Montclair Economic Development Agency, chair.
Excuse me, we'll stop there first, there's a lot in there. So, any questions, comments about the, so far under building a better Montclair? Anybody?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember, Mayor Proten Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. First, on page 35, produce revenue for employee working condition enhancements. What are those enhancements?
Well, those would be the normal labor negotiation process for annual wage and benefit adjustments.
So it's not processed? Okay, thank you. And then the second question I have is on page 40, the Montclair Place consisting of 606 units. Is that on the corner of Central La Marina or is that Sears or is that something else?
That is the northeast corner of the property, yes, where the Robbins Brothers is, as well as the vacant lot that is there. It doesn't incorporate the Sears property, that would be a second-phase project.
Got it. That concludes my questions. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Lopez.
Let's go ahead, since we're on the topic of the Montclair Place issue, the 606 units, I believe it's in, the proposal is in six-to-eight-story building configurations. I know I'm jumping the gun, I know this is, it's just listed in here as a, an item to list as to what's ahead for the Montclair Place Downtown Specific Plan, but I just am leery of the project, given the fact that at present, at a six-story or eight-story structure, I'm of the position that we don't have the adequate means to douse a fire or excavate people from the top floor should a tragedy happen on those floors with the present state of the fire department. I, four stories I'm fine with, beyond that, I get a little nervous and leery of, but I'll express my opinions when that item comes before us at the appropriate time. On page 38, the news about receiving from the Department of Cannabis Control a Retail Access Grant Award in the amount of $195,000, do we know the stipulations as to what those funds are to be used for and how quickly they're to be expended or whatnot?
It's primarily for the development of the ordinance, but we haven't fully vetted it, it just came in, it just came in yesterday, and I really haven't had an opportunity to fully read all of the requirements of the grant.
So just basically consulting fees on, on
If we were to hire somebody, yes, it would pay for that, for example.
Okay. I think that was it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
On page 42, in regard, and I asked this on Monday evening, regard to the Caltrans lot, present, somebody could park for free. What we want to do is turn it over to a developer, build housing, then the developer builds a parking structure and charges for parking. This makes no sense to me if you want people to use mass transit. Are the legislators aware that the proposal is to have a parking structure privately funded where they will be, where the person parking there would be charged for parking?
Well, that's not the proposal.
That is the proposal.
No, no, that isn't the proposal. Right now, we're trying to acquire the property. Once we acquire the property, we would either, A, receive a grant, and we have sought a grant through the federal government, through the bus account for construction of a parking structure. We would obviously have to have a matching grant for that, which would mean we would need somewhere around $20 million. So that's probably not the feasible approach for the city of Montclair, so we would be possibly looking at a public-private partnership. Under the terms of a public-private partnership, it is our intent that we would engage a developer that in exchange for the land, the developer would be required to build the parking structure, and that he or she would not be able to charge for parking. They would then be able to develop the necessary housing that would allow them to recover their costs. That's our intent. We're not, we're not suggesting that the developer would get the land for free and then be able to charge and make a profit off of the parking structure. But that would require negotiations with the public-private partnership, the developer that would engage us in a public-private partnership. I'm not there, I can't answer your question to say how those conversations would go, but I hear you, and it isn't our intent to have parking charged because we agree with you. And we would try to make certain that it would continue to be free parking.
That's not enough. I mean, we're dealing with the future, but it's not much of a guarantee to me. I don't want to see people charged to park to use mass transit.
Okay, well
It's just wrong, and, you know, it's a non-starter for me. So when this item eventually comes to me, if there's charge for parking, I will not only oppose it, I will do what I need to make sure that people using mass transit don't have to pay for it.
Okay.
It shouldn't be, a private developer shouldn't be charging for that.
We understand, and that's not our intent.
Well, let me talk about that development there, first of all. As we know, it's part of our North Montclair Specific Plan, taking the Transit Center and in developing that site there. So I'm hoping that this fall, we can give something solid to both Senator Rubio and also Assembly Member Rodriguez, that they can introduce legislation for the next, well, for the next calendar year that allows Montclair to have ownership of the Transit Center. So Ed, I believe you're working on a site plan map, finalizing that, and then we'll put together a package for both legislators?
Yes.
And I think their goal is to have it, everything ready by the, by September, I think, we're shooting for by Labor Day?
Well, if we can get the site plan ready by then, I'm not sure that that would be possible, but it is my understanding that as long as we have something in by early January, December probably would be preferable, that would give them the opportunity to develop the language for the bill.
Right. Okay. And I hope that we understand that, and I'm not sure where this charging for parking came from. The first time I heard it was when I was meeting with Senator, oh, not meeting, but ran into Senator Rubio, and I know Councilmember Rue brought up charging, so I don't know where this coming, where this is coming from. I don't know, rumor it is, I haven't heard anything, I'm not advocating for it, I have never mentioned to it. I prefer not to have any parking, I don't, I think we've already been pretty solid when Ranch Kamanga and the city of Upland decided to have parking for the Middle East Sites, we were committed to keeping the Montclair Transit Center at a no-fee, and I wish to continue on that even with parking structures. So I'm much, again, not sure where that rumor's coming from. I would appreciate it if we just get our facts straight, and I appreciate it that we don't get overzealous about the parking when there's no need to charge parking and where we're trying to get a piece, this piece of property in the state of California.
Mr. Mayor, based on what I heard Monday night when Mr. Starr said, a developer can build a parking structure, it may be $40 million, they have to get their money back.
Well, let's, again, I think it's pretty clear, Mr. Rue, is that this council does not want any fee parking for public to use the Transit Center. And if developer wants to build a parking structure and it's for his, his tenants, for use of, by his tenants, then that could be a different story, but as far as use for public to use the Transit Center, I think we're pretty clear, we don't want any charge, any charging for that. As far as the, the Transit, the Montclair Place, you know, I know we're talking about fire now, 606 units. Now, I'm assuming that, first of all, I think we have a good fire department, and I kind of take offense when someone's criticizing our fire department, says we're not good enough. They are good enough, and they have, like everybody else, they have their issues, but they are good enough. And so when we put this development together, I'm assuming there's professional experts saying that includes reviewing fire standards, making sure these buildings are all sprinkled, for example, but other means. Am I correct, Mr. Starr?
Absolutely, that is correct, and we would make certain that all of the buildings are equipped with the latest standards in relation to fire suppressant material. We're also, part of our effort in relation to conditioning these projects is that there would be components of contributions related to acquisition of a future ladder truck that would meet the needs and requirements of the fire department.
Right, and that's one that we also talked about. So we have a commitment to redeveloped and did the Montclair Plaza, this council approved the Montclair Plaza Specific Plan, which is a major renovation, not, a major change to the property, which obviously brings a lot of residential units. And this is supposed to be an area of, again, to maintain a strong regional draw for this community, for this, for our area. And so that's a commitment we made to move forward with it, and I hope my council colleagues remember that. If you want us, the Montclair Place remains strong, then these are the steps that we need to take to make sure it remains viable. But I am confident, again, that we will address all the fire safety issues under the fire standards that are required in our fire department, along with mutual assistance we get from the other agencies, we'll be able to resolve or comply to any of the emergencies at that site there. So there is that issue. Regarding the, the Gold Line, Mr. Starr, so it appears right now, there's $4 billion the legislators have continued with this upcoming budget, and both houses have approved, and that's now with the governor in regards to negotiations. Any timeframe you think, Mr. Starr? I realize that even though the budget's supposed to be approved by June 15, that means nothing to document, but any, any idea where we at right now?
Well, technically, they have until the end of the month to actually complete negotiations, but in past, negotiations have often gone into August as well. But the way it stands right now is that the governor has indicated that he's not opposed to the $4 billion that is in the budget for transit. What he is saying is that he wants a tit-for-tat. He wants the legislature to support him on the Delta Conveyance Project. If they can support him on Delta Conveyance, he can support them on all of their requests that they have in the budget, and then we probably have what we want, the governor has what he wants, and I think we need to wait until the end of this month to see how those negotiations continue to go.
Okay, and then, if I hit everything I wanted to hit here? So we hit the Montclair Place, we hit that. In regards to the cannabis, when do you think that this council will look, will begin to work on the cannabis ordinance?
I don't expect to come to you until the first part of 2024.
Okay. Councilman Lopez.
A request, please, before I forget, Mr. Starr. It's alluded to on page 42, the detailed analysis that was submitted to the senator. Could I please get a copy of that detailed analysis that I could review for myself? It'd be appreciated.
No problem.
I'd like one as well.
Yeah, I do think that you and the mayor did receive it back when I sent it, but I'll rescind it.
I could very well be, that could be the case.
No, I meant, I meant Councilmember Rue. Yeah, I will rescind it.
Yeah, there was a detailed email regarding that, and so
And, and I just want to clarify something. My only concern with respect to 606 units, I'm not chiding the fire department, that is the last thing to ever come out of my lips. There's 606 units, let's assume two individuals reside in all units, that's over 1,200 new residents. I am concerned that it's going to add an increase to call volume, both PD and fire, and at the present stage, I just think it'd be a burden right now, and they would be stretched. That's my concern. That's not a comment to disparage the fire department. I would not do that. Since I was 20, 21 years old, I've been advocating for fire department issues in this city. Good chunk of half my life, I, that's the least I would do would be to disparage a department. That's my only concern. It's a legitimate concern, it's not a disparage in
That part I understand, and I think, you know, if we're going to build more residents in this city, then yes, we're going to have to have more resources and staffing, especially in PD and fire as that happens, but we'll deal with that as we go.
Which reminds me, Mr. Starr, are we still trying to develop, I forgot the term you used, but I would have been advocating that we get some concessions out of developers that can then be used to pay for additional police and fire. The city of Fontana is great at it, at doing that, and that's how they fund many of their stations. Where are we in doing that? There was a community development fund or something that you were, or I forgot what it was called?
Yes, we have the Community Facility Districts Fund, that is the tax that residents at each of the projects being developed in North Montclair are required to pay. That goes towards public safety as well as public works, that's also the component that we would be using to enhance for capital outlay, for example, for the acquisition of a new ladder truck.
Right, thank you.
I just, again, want to make sure I have consensus with the council, that the council's good with us submitting a proposal to our, to legislators for the acquisition of the Transit Center. Everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that. Go ahead. We're on to the Montclair Economic Development Agency.
Yes. Montclair Economic Development Agency. The Montclair Economic Development Agency has been tasked to take on an expanding role in promoting economic development, planning for development in the city's sphere of influence, and promotion of affordable housing. In the fiscal year 2023-24 proposed operating budget, the Economic Development Assets Fund retains a balance of $5,623,917 after a proposed transfer in of $785,229. Funds accruing to the EDAF derive in part from the city's annual share of property tax increment previously assigned to the former Montclair Redevelopment Agency. The purpose of the EDAF is to provide and enhance funding within the Economic Development Agency for real property acquisition, affordable housing development, homeless assistance, and economic development activities. Real property purchased through the EDAF will be held by the EDA for future development, either through a public-private partnership or by sale to a private entity for development purposes. The EDA through the Montclair Housing Corporation currently owns and manages 104 affordable housing units and one property on the southwest corner of Central Avenue and Benito Street, planned for use as the office of the Montclair Chamber of Commerce and an adjunct office for the Small Business Administration, formerly the site of Family Collaborative Services and extension of the Ontario Montclair School District. The EDA is presently assembling properties on the northeast corner of Central Avenue and San Bernardino Street for commercial development. The EDA presently owns two properties at the Central Avenue and San Bernardino Street location and is negotiating to acquire two additional properties. The EDA also owns an approximate two-acre parcel north of Brixton Street, west of the Haskell Commercial Property. To achieve its objectives, EDA will, in part, consider tax code provisions related to the operation of opportunity zones. Opportunity zones function as an economic development tool designed to spur economic development and job creation in distressed communities. The purpose of the EDA establishing an opportunity zone program is to generate economic development activity in targeted and distressed geographical areas of Montclair. The city manager and EDA will work with county, state, and federal officials to promote extension of opportunity zone legislation and secure such designation for Montclair's sphere of influence as part of an annexation strategy. The city manager has conditioned this effort with the need for San Bernardino County to restore to the city approximately $2 million in annual property tax increment assigned to the Montclair RDA prior to its discontinuation in 2012. Inclusionary housing ordinance. The EDA is currently updating and revising the city's existing inclusionary housing ordinance requirements and in-lie fee component, and will present for city council consideration during the fourth quarter of 2023. The EDA will have oversight responsibility for the city's IHO. In-lie fees derived from inclusionary housing fees paid by developers and any IHO real property assets transferred to the city by developers will be retained by the EDA for development of affordable housing projects. Affordable housing development. In April 2022, the Montclair Housing Authority became the beneficiary of approximately $3.2 million in repaid residual receipt loans that had been provided to Augusta communities. Funds are restricted for affordable housing programs. The Montclair Housing Corporation holds property in North Montclair, approximate two-acre parcel north of Brixton Street, west of the Haskell Commercial Property, acquired in early 2022 that may serve as a location for a future, future affordable housing development. The city is also committed to acquiring Caltrans-owned property at the The city is also committed to acquiring Caltrans-owned property at the Montclair Trans Center and pursuing a public-private partnership for development of affordable housing. San Bernardino Council of Governments Housing Trust Fund. In 2022, the San Bernardino County Council of Governments initiated the process of exploring opportunities for establishing a county-administered housing trust fund. To date, the COG has prepared a strategic plan and a white paper outlining the operational aspects of the trust fund. The COG projects that it will take approximately four to five years for the trust fund to secure sufficient grant dollars to achieve administrative benefit for member agencies. Based on population, membership cost for Montclair to join the housing trust fund is projected to be approximately $30,000 annually. Addressing homelessness. Homelessness remains a serious issue in Montclair, the region, and throughout California. The EDA, along with the Montclair Code Enforcement Special Operations Team, has been tasked to develop grant funding to facilitate development of temporary housing. Working collaboratively with the EDA, the city's Code Enforcement Special Operations Unit is engaging with local organizations to promote programs as designed to address Montclair's homeless problem. The city is also seeking state grants to provide supportive and education wraparound services, including substance abuse counseling, case management, medical and mental health services, and transition services for more permanent housing. Montclair will also engage with the San Bernardino County Department of Public Health, implementing Governor Newsom's care court concept outlined in the governor's 2022 May budget revise. Remote housing and commercial and industrial development projects throughout the Montclair community. Promoting development throughout the Montclair community pursuant to the guidelines of an updated general plan would improve the overall quality of life throughout the community and improve the city's sales and property tax base. Citywide development. A number of housing, commercial, and logistics projects have already been completed in the city's southern sector. Other projects are under development and/or are in planning. Tiki Drive-In/Mission Project. This site is currently being graded to accommodate a mix of light, industrial, manufacturing, and logistics support in a campus environment. Holt and Mission Boulevard corridors. The city manager and Economic Development Agency Director have worked with Congresswoman Norma Torres to develop federal assistance to enhance the Holt and Mission Boulevard corridors through Pomona, Montclair, and Ontario. The effort is designed to improve the appearance of the boulevards, promote business, and industry and housing development. San Antonio Creek Trail. The San Antonio Creek Trail will consist of a vibrant, connected, and safe multi-use greenway path that will run north-south through the entire city. When completed, the entire length of the San Antonio Creek Trail will provide new connections between neighborhoods and to parks, recreation centers, schools, transit areas, job centers, and other community destinations. Montclair was awarded approximately $4.2 million in funding by the California Department of Transportation for a pilot phase for this project. 2021 Issue of Lease Revenue Bonds. Over the next four years, city staff will complete infrastructure projects identified by the city council for improvement. Projects currently underway include the following. Parks Master Plan. In April 2022, excuse me, the city council approved the award of a contract for development of a Parks Master Plan. The plan has been received by the city council. LD King Engineering is currently completing design for improving the facilities at Saratoga Park, the city's premier sports park. In April 2022, Congresswoman Norma Torres announced that the city was a recipient of a $2 million community service grant for improvements to Saratoga Park. Rita Ranch Park. Construction on the Rita Ranch Park is currently underway. In 2020, the city was awarded a $5.137 million grant from the Proposition 68 statewide park program grant awards to assist with completion of this park. A portion of the Rita Ranch Park construction will be offset by use of 2021 lease revenue bonds. Flashing Stop Sign Replacement Program. The city council has demonstrated a commitment to the Safe Routes to School Program. A permitted manual on uniform traffic control devices upgrade for the SRTS program is installation of flashing stop signs at designated points throughout the community. An estimated 433 stop signs are installed throughout the city. Replacing each stop sign will cost approximately $779,400, not including installation. An analysis of GIS mapping data indicates that approximately 250 stop sign locations warrant an upgrade to the flashing stop sign configuration at a cost of approximately $450,000, with installation costing approximately $100,000. Installation of the flashing stop signs will occur upon receipt of inventory by the vendor for installation.
Any questions on this portion of the presentation? As you're doing it, I got a question regarding Saratoga Park. So, LD King is working on the design of Saratoga Park, am I correct, Ed?
Yes, that is correct.
And have we, are there going to be any meetings with the Little League representatives regarding the park improvements?
They have been asked to participate in the design. I don't know that they've been met with yet, but that certainly will be part of the process.
All right, should make sure of that. And does that include removing the, replace the wall next to the apartment? There's an iron fence there that's in pretty bad shape on the, which is on the east side of the park, facing the apartments on Vernon.
Public Works Director already is making her way to the podium to respond.
Go ahead.
Mayor, Mayor, Pro Town Council, members and staff, yes, we actually met with LD King recently, and we discussed the different plans for Saratoga. We did discuss that wall. It needs to be done something because.
I prefer a block wall there, but I'll let you see what the recommendations are. But it needs to be something that's pretty.
Correct. Once we come up with the conceptual plan and different options, we will meet with the Little League and with other staff to discuss the overall plan of the entire site, which will include the playground and other areas.
And I assume it's sometime this council get a chance to review the proposed concept plans, make sure we're good with it before.
Yes.
We'll be presenting that to council as well.
All right, thank you. Councilman Martinez.
Thank you. I'm intrigued by this opportunity zone program, and I wanted to know, is the idea to create jobs within that zone and to staff those positions with Montclair residents?
Well, the opportunity zones were adopted in 2017. It was a program that was introduced by former President Trump, and it required federal legislation to establish the opportunity zones. There are a number of opportunity zones in the Montclair area, but it requires a developer interest to take advantage of that through tax incentives. Not a lot of developers have been motivated by it at this point in time. The SOI, the city's sphere of influence, is not an area. I don't know why, but it was never designated as an opportunity zone. So, we have met with San Bernardino County officials, asking that they work with us to try and secure additional legislation that would declare the SOI area as opportunity zones, because we think that that is really truly ripe for development activity under the opportunity zone concept. One, because the land values in there are probably the best opportunities for developers to come in and take advantage of, and based on the type of development pattern that is down there and the quality of a lot of the development, it is, again, ripe for a developer to be able to assemble land in that area. Whether or not we'll have success with getting the federal government to extend opportunity zones and to add additional areas remains to be seen, but that certainly is an effort where we are working with, with San Bernardino County.
Thank you.
Councilman Lopez.
While I stepped out, did we address the issue regarding the acquisition of residential properties for purposes of low-income housing? Was that part of this?
No.
Are we going to get there yet?
We continue to acquire residential properties through the Economic Development Agency, and that was covered in a previous section.
Under the Economic Development Agency when we discussed it.
Okay, I was.
It talked about.
Because I saw in the summary, all the listing of homes that were recently purchased by the city to then be handed over to the Housing Corporation or the ED?
Yes.
Okay. My question was this, which is, I'm fine with the acquisitions that the city had made on those properties, but if we're going to continue that practice, at what point do we stop the practice? Because if we continue to buy residential homes, at what point do we, we no longer become a city and a government, we, in effect, become landlord and basically in the real estate business. When is that practice going to stop? Because we have how many, I think 100 and some odd units that we currently own? Again, I'm not opposed to that practice, I just think at some point, it can't go on in perpetuity, it has to stop, because then we just become a, well, Montclair becomes a landlord.
Well, let me answer the question. There's always been a strategy. So, early on, when we developed the foundation areas off of Kingsley Bandera Areas, early on, before I got here, the city purchased apartment buildings for the whole purpose of creating these foundation areas, and getting orders to sign CCNRs to do the improvements. And then later on, I remember on Amherst, between Kingsley and Holt, there were a number of, you know, there were a number of issues there. So, we felt in order to revitalize the area, to go ahead and purchase properties there, which we did, I think we owned maybe six, seven billions in that neighborhood there. We also wanted to, during my time, revitalize Central Avenue, single-family homes, a lot more rental or non-owner occupied, and so we started a program purchasing Central Avenue homes for the purpose of just, you know, holding on to them, fixing them up, make the front yard look much more attractive. There's that. We purchased homes in North Montclair and North Montclair Place, again, for the whole purpose of the North Montclair specific plan of where that's going and be able to have some flexibility to do projects there, because we own these properties. The same thing on Mona Vista Avenue between, here recently, between San Bernardino and Benito, I think we purchased three or four homes if we decide to widen that street or portion that street and provide those homes some options in case we have to purchase other properties from owners. So, it's all behind a strategy. I agree, we just can't go out and buy properties and that's not a role here. I think it's more of a strategy what the city is trying to accomplish. I think, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
No, and I would agree and concur with your latter statement that you just made. I don't think it's our role, but I agree with the strategy. I'm not, by all means, here to halt it or advocate for its elimination. I just think, if we continue down that trend, I think at some point we need to pump the brakes. Just a follow-up question regarding the opportunity zones. In your summary, Mr. Starr, you stated that Montclair had, you alluded to several designated areas within the city being those zones. Is it just limited to the sphere of influence predominantly?
No, there are no opportunity zones in the SOI at this point in time.
Okay, then in your summary, I believe it's alluded to there being designations where they're eligible.
So, the only opportunity zones in Montclair are in the northern section of the town. When we engaged with San Bernardino County, our purpose was to get them to work with us to address legislation so that opportunity zones could be declared in the sphere of influence. We questioned them as to why the sphere of influence was never a opportunity zone designated area, because it certainly is ripe for that. They had no answer, but at this point, the only way we can get opportunity zones in that area would be through additional federal legislation.
And I would agree, as the market makes some changes right now, I think it's, it would be wise, perhaps, for them to buy some property and invest. Perhaps, the hesitation might be the 90% stipulation of profits being held in a bank account, invested in the zone itself, and they can't utilize it for anything else, although there's tax benefits if they do that for five, seven, 10 years. Anyhow, that might be the hindrance or whatnot. I think that is it, Mr. Mayor, for the time being?
Okay, anybody else, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. On page 51, we're talking about the San Bernardino County Council of Governments initiating, I think, is that still SBCTA? Have they changed their name again?
SBCOG, City Council of Governments, two different entities operated by same staff of SBCTA and same board.
Have we dismissed the idea of the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust, which Senator Rubio established?
No, we have not, but it required legislation. That legislation that she introduced last year did not go anywhere. We have asked her about that again, and her approach right now is that she's working on a new leg, on new legislation that would introduce larger regional trust funds and fund them through the state, and then these trust funds would require participation by the agencies within those regional areas. So, that's her new approach now.
And the reason I say this is, the housing trust she established, as far as geography, is fairly small. San Bernardino County COG is rather large. It encompasses all of this county. The money that we would see back might be very diminished, because it'd be spread out over a much larger area, and I can see, how do I phrase this right? The powers that be in San Bernardino County, seeing that it goes to the High Desert, east of the 15, places like that, whereas the other housing trust would put us up against, would put us into a district that actually has had a track record with this, and the money is there, it'll take forever to aggregate this kind of money from the county.
Right, and as it turns out, of the 26 agencies in San Bernardino County that would otherwise qualify, only 11 agencies have demonstrated interest, and they are all from the west end as well, or, well, I should say, from Ukaypa to the east, to the west. So, it would be focused in our area primarily. It wouldn't really be going out to the high desert or mountain areas, because those agencies have demonstrated no interest.
I just, I would just want to make sure it works. Because the one in San, and the San Gabriel Valley actually works and has been very successful.
It's going to be a separate entity. City Council Governments will staff it still, it'll be a separate entity, and it's volunteer what cities want to participate in this San Bernardino Housing Trust Fund, which, as Ed pinpointed, many of these cities in the West Valley are interested.
But we'll see.
Okay, nothing else there? So, on page 49, Ed, I just want a clarification. You have the inclusion housing fees, the inclusion housing ordinance. Where are we on the housing element plan?
Well, that's basically completed, but we're waiting for final state approval, correct?
We have tentative state approval, we just have to formally adopt it through the city council process, and we're hoping to do that with the general plan amendment update and those other, and zoning updates that we hope to accomplish in the near future, maybe late summer, early fall.
Okay, and I'm assuming at that time or this workshop we're having in the second half of the year, we'll be discussing this proposed inclusion housing ordinance, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I want to pinpoint to my council colleagues again, as Councilman Lopez brought up, we have 104 affordable housing units here in the city of Montclair, where most of these residents are probably at the lower income, 80% or less of the area median income. I knew one resident that contacted me about an issue, was paying, I believe, $800 for a two-bedroom unit. That's pretty reasonable in today's world, but that, again, that was based on their income. So, I'm very proud of what this city's done, and I can tell you right now, a lot of other cities around us don't have those numbers, and so we're very, along with the other projects being built here in Montclair. When it comes to the homeless issue, I know I went to a meeting about a month ago with staff, and the feeling from county staff, which hosted the meeting, was that we need more beds, we need more facilities, that's a big need in here. So, we'll have a workshop on this issue or two, but I want to say this, is that this is a regional issue, this is not a city-by-city issue, and the solution has to be by, it has to be by region. So, I believe that.
A question on that. Would it be a regional issue on high-end?
You know what? You're out of order, Mr. Rue. That was very rude. You interrupted me. I didn't interrupt you. So, I suggest you control yourself and control your behavioral. So, what I want to say this is that we need to have a regional approach to affordable house, and I'm sorry, to homeless housing. You know, homeless people don't travel by city boundaries, they travel as they go. Obviously, some have, are homeless because of economics, and others are homeless because of, because of mental issues or drug alcohol abuse. So, I, you know, I will love to have a facility in Montclair if, a regional facility. if a regional facility in Montclair, if it works out well. Or if another city where it works out well too, and we participate, I'm in favor of that too. But there's a lot of factors that go into it. So, I appreciate staff's involvement in this, trying to come up with a good solution. And then, we'll go from there. So, and I also understand staff did apply for a state grant under the... I can't remember what the grant is, but kind of what the city of Redlands did, when they purchased a motel and converted that into a homeless shelter. So, we will see as we go. But again, I want to mention, this is a regional approach. Can't be a city-by-city approach. So, let's go now to special purpose funds, and then we'll finish up there.
Special Purpose Funds established to address current and future liabilities, programs, projects, goals, requiring a commitment of funds not incorporated into the general fund operating budget. CAL-PRS Unanticipated Normal Cost retains $3.5 million for CAL-PRS and post-employment liabilities. Technology Account retains $700,000 for technology acquisitions. Self-Insurance Fund retains $1.6 million for city-related self-insurance retention liabilities. Building Maintenance Fund retains $2 million for building maintenance. Unanticipated Personal Adjustment Fund retains $1 million for unanticipated personnel-related expenditures. Equipment Replacement Fund retains $2,668,000 for equipment acquisitions. This reflects a reduction of $332,000 towards fiscal year 2023-24 capital outlay purchases. OPEB Retiree Medical Liability retains $2 million for other post-employment benefits. Contingency Account retains $200,000 for unanticipated expenditures. UAL POB Amortization Service Fund contains 3... I'm sorry, retains $3.1 million for unanticipated UAL charges. Parking Facility Development retains just over $9.5 million for parking facility development. Inflation Recession Control Expenditure Fund retains $1 million for unanticipated cost increases. Gold Line Betterment Fund retains $1.25 million for aesthetic improvements to infrastructure for the Gold Line Light Rail System at Mona Vista Avenue and the Montclair Trans Center. City staff has also submitted a $5.6 million Community Project Fund request for Montclair Trans Center improvements. Street Maintenance Fund retains $1.25 million for street maintenance. Homelessness Advocacy Housing Outreach Assistance Fund retains $500,000 for homelessness aid. Total estimated all special purpose funds, $30,688,706. Now, we'll discuss the 2014 issue of lease revenue bonds, payment period fiscal year 2014 to 2045. Issue amount was $45 million. The purpose was to defuse the balance of the 2005 issue, which was used for police facility and youth and senior center projects. It provided approximately $22 million for public works, infrastructure projects. These funds have been exhausted. Annual debt service, approximately $2.6 million through fiscal year 2044-45. And this year, the funding source for annual debt service is the general fund revenue, and it's just over $2.5 million. The 2021 issue of lease revenue bonds, payment period fiscal year 2022 to 2051. The issue amount was $45 million. The purpose is to complete infrastructure improvement projects throughout the city. Remaining balance, approximately $44.73 million. Annual debt service, approximately $2.4 million through fiscal year 2050 to 51. Funding source for annual debt service is the general fund, and the payment this year is just over $2.3 million. 2021 issue of pension obligation bonds, payment period fiscal year 2021 to 2041. The issue amount was $62,190,000. The purpose was to transfer debt from the city's California Public Employees Pension System unfunded accrued liability account to the pension obligation bond. Annual debt service is approximately $4.4 million through fiscal year 2040-41. Funding source for annual debt service is the general fund. This year, it's, I'm sorry, for next fiscal year, will be just over $4.4 million. Post-budget conclusion. Fiscal year 2023-24 general fund operating budget. We have a successful and balanced budget. Utilizes a number of funds and strategies to achieve balance and respond to a number of community and organizational needs. Improved sales tax revenues combined with increased transactions and use tax earnings generated by Measure F and Measure L contribute to the city's ability to recover in the post-COVID-19 pandemic era. The fiscal year 2023 proposed budget incorporates the following debt service funds. The 2014 issue of lease revenue bonds debt service fund, just over $2.5 million. The 2021 issue of lease revenue bonds debt service fund, just over $2.3 million. And the 2021 issue of pension obligation bonds debt service fund, just over $4.4 million. Fiscal year 2023-24 budget, as proposed, also incorporates the allocation of funds for the following three funds introduced for consideration. The Gold Line Betterment Fund, $1.25 million. Street Maintenance Fund, $1.25 million. And Homelessness Advocacy Housing Outreach Assistance Funds, $500,000. For fiscal year 2023-24, each city department was provided greater flexibility in the preparation of their respective budget programs. Minimal adjustments that took into consideration historical data, expenditure details, actual and projected needs, and available funding were made to budgeted requests. Going forward, city staff will routinely look at fresh approaches for service delivery, continue to evaluate grants and outside funding opportunities, seek to develop strategies to improve both the appearance and infrastructure of the community, promote new revenue concepts, pursue development of the city's commercial and residential base, promote economic development opportunities by drawing on the city's past and effective promotion of redevelopment, continue to develop the city's expanding partnership with CIM Group for Investments in North Montclair, and work with legislators and the city council to move Montclair forward. End of the fiscal year 2023-24 proposed budget representation, and we'll answer any additional questions you might have.
Okay, any questions? Councilman Lopez.
On page 61, please, under the Gold Line Betterment Fund, and it's also mentioned in the city manager's summary. I'm quoting the summary. City staff also plans to submit a federal grant request for $2 million for public parking facility construction costs. It goes on and on, listing the anticipated completion date. Is that separate from the 5.6 request?
Any parking would be separate from that, yes.
Okay, I just want a clarification on that. So, if we get the 5.6 plus the 2, we got 7.6 to deal with those issues. Okay, just want a clarification. And then, since we're done with the presentation, in the summary of yours, Mr. Starr, the... There's something that concerned me and alarmed me. It is regarding installation of bike lanes throughout the city. Just trying to find my notes. I, a lot of these pages look the same as they're... How big was your dissertation or thesis, by the way? Because I, every year, this seems like a book. If you haven't written a book yourself, you should consider doing so since you write thoroughly and accurately. My concern is, there is a... You mentioned in the, as part of this budget, that city staff going forward for the year will look at installing bike lanes on places like Mills from Holt to Arrow, Benson from Holt to, I believe, the 10. And I think you stated in your report that the city of ours in Ontario are in discussions to bring potentially Benson down to one lane in each direction. I'm concerned because there's a line in there about making sure that San Bernardino Street from Mills to Central is a bike lane. And in order to do that, you would displace the ability for many of those residents on that street, on San Bernardino Street, that have very limited access to the back alleys because they were built in the 50s and they were much narrower and designed for one family car. We're taking away the parking space for them by the addition of a bike lane. And I, one, I've never seen us having a high demand for bike lanes like the city of Claremont does. But Claremont has a culture for that with their high college residency rate and their downtown and whatnot. The bike lanes on Orchard at the moment, I rarely see them used. And I drive Orchard to go to Los Portales quite a bit. I just would rather the brakes be pumped, no pun intended, on the bike lane on San Bernardino Street. I just don't see the need for it. I think you're going to displace families' abilities to park there. I want to go on record on that, and I just don't, it's not necessary. I'm fine with the other areas... Actually, no, I'll take that back. Let me rephrase my position. I'm against any bike lane addition to any part of the city where folks that use the public streets to park for their families would be displaced. And I just, I have a bad taste in my mouth regarding that. So, I would welcome your comments if you'd like. You don't have to, but I wanted to register that concern.
Certainly, and any transition away from or to a street diet would come to the city council in relation to any street that we would be making such a proposal for. The city does have an active transportation plan. The state, for its part, is certainly promoting active transportation throughout the communities in the state of California within our own Safe Route to School Plan as well as our Systemic Safety Analysis Plan. Active transportation is a heavy component promoted by those plans to provide children a safe means to get to school. One of the reasons for the active transportation plan is because there aren't enough children who are walking or riding their bicycle. You might recall back when you were going to school, walking to school or riding your bicycle might have been a big part of your life. That doesn't seem to be what is part of today's demographics as far as children making their way to school. So, one large feature of the active transportation plan is to try and reinvigorate that attitude amongst parents as well as their children to try and create a healthier community. But again, the real germination of moving this forward would be to get permission of the council first before we would implement any of those plans.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. Just, I did find my page. Two other comments on the page in question that you allude here. The city's expansive bond program for street rehabilitation includes the following recent and planned improvements. Two bullet points that I had questions on. Repaving of nearly every street in the city. And I know that that started, I believe, in 2014. And it's since continuing with, from that council going to this present council. My concern is this. We have a separate water district with their own autonomy and their own property and their own plumbing, if you will, under city streets. Can we enter into an agreement that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we expend hard-earned dollars on repaving and doing streets only to have them six months later ripped up for service? I know that's inevitable, but if there can be some type of an agreement, perhaps that would solve some angst going forward with respect to that. The next comment is regarding the checked item, Mona Vista Avenue at Palo Verde Street and north of Interstate 10. I don't know if you want to comment or the mayor. But is there, I wasn't under the impression that SBCTA had an obligation. Once they're done with the widening of the freeway and the overpass, do they not have any obligation to either reimburse or fix that particular intersection in question so it's not coming out of our pocket?
Only within the area in which they were doing their construction. So, for example, north of I-10 on Mona Vista Avenue would probably be maybe 200 feet to the north. It would certainly be south of San Jose Street, and then, we would be responsible for the rest.
So, that would include probably south of the 10.
South would be to Palo Verde, I believe.
And that's an intersection that's causing some problems. Which, by the way, the candlesticks they put up, please convey to SBCTA. One, thank you, but two, unfortunately, riders, drivers have gone over them, knocked them down. They need to be reinstalled or something much more firmer. But it was solving the problem. And a lot of folks on social media and those that have reached out to me expressed some great pleasure in having those installed. Again, Mr. Mayor, unless I find something in my notes again, I believe I'm done for the moment.
Okay, anybody else?
I will make a follow-up to the bicycle situation. Benson Avenue is one that is a major thoroughfare. There are schools there. I have a fear that narrowing Benson Avenue will create more problems. Many of the people on Benson park on Benson, both sides, Ontario and Montclair, because they don't have the ability to park in the alleyway garages they have. I've had residents tell me that when they do park there, there's maybe four, five, six cars, homes in a row, and everybody's getting out at the same time to go to work, and it creates trouble. They're not wide. At present, Benson is a mess because of the freeway. But once that's fixed, I hope we're not narrowing it down. There's a bit of an incongruity that I'm trying to figure it out. And perhaps, down the line, as we work through all this, somebody can help me. We say we want a community where people can bicycle. I hear we need to get rid of the car and bicycle, roller skate, roller blade, do all this. Yet, at the same time, we have businesses that might be coming in town, coffee shop, donut shop, something of that sort, that wants walk-up access. So, you could do bicycle or walk-up. I've seen these. At the same time, we say, no, we don't want those. Doesn't make sense to me. You can't say you want a bicycling community and a walkable community and then turn down the businesses that want to have just a walk-up facility. It makes no sense. So, as we work through this, we've got to look at this. But I would concur, as far as where we have streets that people park in front of their home, that we need to consider them. And we need to understand that many of the cities around us were developed in a different era. Many of them were developed between 1900 and 1930. The car was really not even there. Most people didn't park. We need to look at this down the line. We have an issue, as it is, on Benson and many streets, especially where there are schools, where parents, we're never going to stop this. Open the doors, street-side, and let their children out. That makes a lot of, for a lot of problems. But we're not going to be able to change those parents. It will only get worse in the future. The other issue is, and I know this is a very divisive issue in this city, very, very divisive, is on low to moderate income housing and the homeless. I'm hearing tonight that homelessness is a regional issue. Maybe it is. But you would never hear them say housing for the top 1% is a regional issue. If the county said, we're going to take a facility, convert them into high-end luxury units for the top 1%, every city would be screaming, why not us? Why not us? When it comes to the homeless, large regional facilities generally do not work. It's been proven that they're better off to be localized in a community where you can do much more specialized help with them. In fact, there are cities that have small homeless villages, and they work much more efficiently than large regional shelters. Thank you.
Okay, question I have for staff again on the UAL payments, the accrued liability payments. In our payment that was made this fiscal year, do we make... Is there a new unfunded liability payment that was made?
Well, I don't know if it's been made yet, but there is always a new UAL on an annual basis. It's just not being compounded on top of $70 million with 7% interest. It's a small amount, and we pay it off based on available funding that we have for that.
Yeah, so for next fiscal year, I believe it's around $250,000.
Right, yeah.
$250,000, okay. All right. Let's go to housing now. We'll finish up with housing.
In the Montclair Housing Corporation proposed budget for fiscal year 2023-24. List of Montclair Housing Corporation properties contained in... It is contained in the Montclair Housing Corporation budget. The estimated fund balance at July 1, 2023 is just over $2 million. Estimated revenue for fiscal year 2023-24 is $975,000, and interest income is $18,000, which brings us up to just over $3 million. Positions previously funded by the Housing Corporation are now fully funded by the general fund, an action that reserves Housing Corporation funding for maintenance and expansion of the city's affordable housing program. On this table, you see all the costs for the different expenses listed. They total $978,400. And so, I... And so, at the end of fiscal year 2024, we estimate that the fund balance will be $2,088,894. And that concludes our presentation.
Okay, any more comments or questions regarding the budget? Anybody have anything to say? Carissa.
Just honored to make the comment that to be able to maintain the reserve that was maintained, and also to plan for significant development in the city, is really impressive. Really, really good job.
Councilman Lopez.
With respect to the listing of properties that we own under the Montclair Housing Corporation, do we have an estimated cumulative value of all the properties we own?
We do, but it's not a legitimate estimate. It's provided by our auditor, and it's, it, because of the way that their process works, it undervalues what we would get the homes for if we put them on the market. So, they have a formula that they use, and I, I think the total comes out around, what, $7 million? Some is, is very low, but obviously, if we were to sell 104 units, the city would make several hundred million dollars.
Why are we continuing to use that consultant?
Because it's just a process that they have to follow. It's not them, it's just, it's the, it's the formula that they have to use in which they are required by law to base values on properties that are owned by a housing corporation.
And, and back to the part-time benefit positions, I know we reduced them from eight to six, and now we're down to two.
Yes.
Mr. Starr or Ms. Kolbik, why, why is it not being suggested that we incorporate those positions and no longer classify them as part-time benefited, but just absorb them into the structure? Because are they not able at present time, they're not part of a bargaining unit, are they not?
That is correct. They're part-time employees.
And they cannot then partake in retirement plans offered to say other, that, that other employees get, correct? They only can pay into Social Security?
Social Security, correct.
Because granted, there's only two, and I can only use one as an example, I'm not going to name names, but you have one employee that's been here for a good decent amount of time, who's not going to reap the benefit of a significant retirement option and plan as other employees in the department that they work in. I would just be comfortable with absorbing them. Yes, it'll incur more costs, but I think to reward those employees, we should do so. I just would like to see us get away from part-time benefited, because I don't think they could, they don't reap the benefit after putting in the amount of service and professionalism that they give in return. I'm uneasy about that, that's all.
No, of the two, I believe one is vacant.
Yes, and unfunded.
I'm sorry, what?
And unfunded.
Yeah, and unfunded, so that will not be a part-time benefited position in the future. I believe the position that you're speaking of, that individual has gone, or will go full-time with this new budget.
No. You're thinking of the, you're thinking of the part-time office specialist at the fire department. This is a different position.
Yes, I am thinking of that position.
Yeah.
Okay, he has another one in mind. Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any more comments on the, on the budget overall? I will say that this is a very good budget, again, two years in a row. I appreciate staff's hard work going into this, to make this happen. We're very fortunate with Measure L, that has allowed us to have additional funds to continue to provide services this community expects. My concern remains as is, and I think you're all aware of it, is personnel, making sure we have not just budget positions, but people actually occupying positions, and I'm hoping that this next fiscal year, we'll see an improvement in that area. But I'll hold my breath, because we know what the, how the economy is going when it comes to filling positions. So, congratulations on staff putting this together. It sounds like council is okay to move this forward to the, our special meeting next week. Am I correct, council? Any objections to it?
Would, would any of my colleagues not entertain the discussion about the part-time benefited positions? I really am bothered by it.
Well, I think that's a personnel issue, and I think we just leave it here at, on the personnel level. So, I think we just leave it as is. So, speaking of personnel positions, I know this council last Monday talked about June 19th holiday. I kind of feel that, one, it would be nice if I was here to hear the discussions, I was absent, and two, I kind of feel that a policy decision was made, and wasn't even on the agenda, in my feeling, it's probably a violation of the Brown Act, but I'm not going to contest that. So, I'm going to ask that we make a motion regarding this issue, that we, my motion is that we place this on a future closed session meeting for discussion by the council regarding Juneteenth holiday as part of a negotiation with the bargain units. So, have a second to the motion?
Just a second.
Repeat that, I'm sorry.
The motion is that we, we have a close session discussion regarding having June 19th as a holiday as part of labor negotiations. And a second by Councilmember Rue.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I believe what we talked about at that last meeting was to allow City Manager Starr to consider that as he goes through the negotiation process.
Yeah, we, and, and my, in my opinion, and I'm sorry, I apologize, I interrupted you, but my opinion is you were directing the city manager, and this item was not even on the agenda. What should have happened was, is that the council should have said, we'd like to have this as a discussion at a future meeting in order to provide directions to the city manager. So, I think that that's a problem this, this council has right now on this issue. The second issue is, this is a bargaining unit issue, and it should be dealt with in closed session by giving the city manager direction, whatever that direction is. So, is, there is a motion on the floor? Any questions in the motion? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, you may have just answered my question. I may have a different opinion, but I was going to say, why not have the discussion in open session since the initial topic was brought up in open session? I, I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Johnson, I think the discussion was to allow for all employees to receive the benefit irregardless of present contracts in place?
I use that verbiage, Councilman Lopez, I think what I was asking City Manager Starr to consider it going forward.
Well, that's a, that's a policy decision of the city council, and council, and City Manager Starr, if I'm correct, this is a memorandum of understanding issue with our bargain units. The bargaining has to agree to it, they can, they can decide to decline it and don't want to have a day off. Am I correct, City Manager Starr?
Yes, that is correct, or they could use it to bargain for something else.
Or they could bargain for something else, or maybe they may just, you know, you know, that's, that's why it has to be a closed session matter for discussion. That's the reason why I'm saying that.
All right.
I, I've been doing this for, beyond both sides of DIES, and, and when it comes to MOU issues, has to be, has to be a me confer item, so, sorry about that, but my, my motion again is, we will have this in a closed session and discuss in a closed session regarding the June 19th holiday. Okay, so, if everybody is in agreement, we'll go ahead and vote on it, and we'll have the... Okay, let's just, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
In favor, state aye. Any objections, any abstentions, then it's adopted 5-0. Okay, any public comment, members of the public that want to comment? Do you have anybody, Andrea?
There is no public
No public comments. We're adjourned, thank you.